Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Notice this meeting was given in advance throughout by publication one time in the Keith County News and posting at the city administration building as shown by the certificate of posting notice. Notice this meeting was simultaneously given to the president and all members of the council. Availability of the agenda was communicated in the advanced notice and the notice to the president and the council of this meeting. All proceedings hereafter will be taken while this convening meeting is open to the attendance of the public. This meeting is being convened in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the southeast corner of the council chamber. Please sign the sign in sheet located on the table by members of the press. Any person wishing to address the council may do so by standing. You are recognized, please do it at the podium, state your name and the organization, interest or person you represent before you begin speaking. Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Lock.
Here.
Dupierre.
Here.
Holstein.
Here.
Krasky.
Here.
Laplin.
Here.
All right, uh, gentlemen, tonight, uh, we're having some technical difficulties with our voting software, so uh, Clerk Skinner will be taking a roll call vote on, uh, any action on motions. So we have nothing on our consent agenda this evening, uh, no public hearing. Public forum, do we have anyone here wishing to speak on public forum on something that is not on the agenda? Not seeing any, we'll move on to the report of the city clerk treasurer, minutes of the regular meeting held May twenty seventh, twenty five.
Notice of the minutes of the regular meeting held May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Block and a second by Councilman Dupierre, approving minutes. Yet there is no further discussion, uh. Jane, please call for the vote.
Block.
Yes.
Dupierre.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Laplin.
Yes.
Krasky.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carrying. Uh, moving on to our financial report for May twenty twenty five.
Okay, for the month ended, May thirty first, twenty twenty five, revenues were one million, four hundred fifty five thousand, seventy seven dollars and fifty six cents. Expenses for the month were one million, ninety six thousand, six hundred forty seven dollars and twenty one cents. Fiscal year-to-date expenses, or excuse me, revenues are eight million, three hundred seventy one thousand, one hundred twenty five dollars and seventy nine cents. And fiscal year-to-date expenses are eight million, eight hundred ninety seven thousand, seven hundred sixty two dollars and two cents. With thirty-three percent of the fiscal year remaining, the proprietary funds have eighty-seven percent of their budget revenue remaining, the governmental funds have forty-five percent, and the internal service funds have thirty-eight percent of their budget revenue remaining. And on the expense side, the proprietary funds have eighty-seven percent of their budget expenses remaining. The governmental funds have fifteen percent and the internal service funds have point one five percent of their budget expenses remaining. Fiscal year to date, the city has received six hundred one thousand, eight hundred sixty one dollars and eighty seven cents from franchise fees, twenty seven thousand, three hundred forty six dollars and ten cents from telephone occupation taxes, and ninety-two thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents from hotel occupation taxes. Um, the unencumbered LB eight forty balance is negative three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
Can you give us a little clarity on that?
That is the amount that that the LB eight forty account, so it's a negative, so it's negative three twenty-four.
Yep.
So that's what if every grant were paid off in full, we would, that would, what we, that is the amount would be short, the negative three hundred twenty-four thousand.
Part of that is because of the four hundred and twenty that was allocated to the old one.
Yeah, the
Right.
Uh, big red belt.
Right.
Actually, the Housing Development Corp has
Oh, yeah, how does it go, corporate, yeah, it's a big, big red project. Uh, looks like we're on the right side of our budget with our our expenditures falling well within our, uh, budget.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions?
What do we miss them in, on the revenue side for year-to-date that we're behind on?
A lot of that is the, uh, for the utilities, the SRF loans that we were waiting on, um. We the projects haven't been able to get completed because of the holdup of the state in Department of Environment and Energy.
The state revolved funds that would apply for that go against the wastewater treatment plant. That's clear, the Water Advisory Council, it's held up, Nebraska Department of Energy and Environment, we've been told that the fund is over allocating and then not issuing, they're not releasing those funds until they get more money from the feds, more money from the feds. What with the, is, is, is being tied up, so that's got us tied up.
And evidently, we must, must have spent something on those.
We've had to spend
Yes.
Well, as Kevin calls them, our Band-Aids.
Yeah, exactly.
Our Band-Aid things that we've had to
The sewer treat.
We gotta keep the plant running.
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of the reason our expenditures are, are still within, our expenditure under what our budget is because we haven't spent those, we don't have the revenue either to do that.
Yeah.
We also budgeted budgets for some airport funds that we haven't got yet.
Yeah, and we've had to spend some money there too.
We haven't, we haven't received any good news from either the state or federal governmental unfunding, which, uh, it's gonna be a tough budget for coming up. So
Yep.
And we also have a discrepancy between revenue expense because we have been spending the remainder of our ARPA funds that we received several years back. So the project, the sewer project that we're doing, that, that money is all being spent with ARPA funds. So the money's already, it's a cash balance that we have in our account.
Yep.
So we're feeling the federal cuts.
We're feeling the effects of chaos.
Yes.
Across the board on a lot of projects, not
No, I know. I just wanted to make that.
There, there is a definite fiscal impact to the uncertainty.
Yes.
That, that relates specifically to Oklahoma.
Any other questions, comments on the budget? All right, thank you, Jane. All right, uh, moving on, recommendations of departments, boards of committees under administration, the discharge of fireworks and corporate limits on the Oklahoma.
As President, in, uh, twenty twenty-two, the ordinance was updated that, uh, facilitates the council to to ban the discharge of fireworks from the corporate relation, limits if, if conditions exist. The county currently has a ban on the discharge of fireworks, uh, we would be, if we, if, if we move forward with this, we would be in concert with where the county currently stands, as I understand that there are discussions on that tomorrow. Uh, I've talked to Fire Chief Zimmerman on, on where the, the fire chiefs in the valley at or in, well, I'm still in Colorado, and the county are at, um. We do have good subsoil moisture right now, uh, we've had, we've been blessed with, with just a what, five and a half inches of rain?
Five, what do you want?
Almost six inches of rain. Uh, the concern is, I, I believe, and I won't, I'll let the fire chief speak for them, they'll, they'll speak for himself, but uh, this is going to create an opportunity for more fuel to grow. And then if we get a, a series of hot dry winds over the next fifteen, ten to fifteen days, that will just create more fuel at that particular time.
Um, so to be clear, the city does not currently have a ban on fireworks.
We do not currently have a ban on
On the discharge of fireworks. Uh, we did stop, uh, we, we did not issue any permits to vendors for the sale of fireworks during the state ban.
Correct.
Okay.
The state ban ended dealt the twentieth of May. So the state ban was held up to the twentieth of May, most of the vendors were already beyond the window of opportunity to, to acquire inventory.
Yeah. Keep simmering. Comments?
Evening, council. Members of the audience, my name is Dell Zimmerman, I'm the fire chief here in the state of Oklahoma. Uh, just gonna speak briefly on, uh, the current conditions, I, um, leading up to the recommendation to the county. Uh, we went outside and we gathered, uh, two different sources of information from national weather meteorologists, one was Darren Claybo, uh, the other one is Sean Jacobs and, uh, Chris, uh, Butler, as I believe, uh, North Platte. Uh, those are the, the, the folks that we were, uh, consulting with, uh, on the initial recommendation that we made to the county. Now, that was prior to the deluge of rain that we received. I guess we need to put bans on, uh, more if it's gonna rain every time we do want, but anyway, so, uh, about four o'clock this afternoon, and if you forgive me, the email's on my phone, so that's why I'm gonna be on that. Um, starting with Darren Claybo, uh, his, uh, forecast is still the same, uh, June, July, um, we're in drought. Uh, we're looking at above-average temps, below-average moisture. Um, the May twenty-seventh drought monitor showed us a moderate to severe. Um, saying the drought is persisting, uh, and they're only looking for those conditions to expand. And we're looking at hot dry summer, in other words. Uh, that's Darren Claybo, the, uh, email that I received from the National Weather Service in North Platte. Uh, okay, uh, here is the weather outlook through June and July for Keith County from our climate program leader, Chris Flackford. Uh, so it's broken down into two parts, uh, precipitation received and forecast over the next several days. Uh, for the year so far, Oklahoma has received eight point three two inches, which is around a half inch below normal. Uh, since May first, five point eight one inches of rain has fallen in Oklahoma, which is well above. So that's the amount, we, you know, we've got six inches of rain. Uh, what I'm saying, take out January, February, March, April, and the last forty days have been wet in the Oklahoma area, so we are, as Kevin said, we've got subsoil moisture right now. Uh, and this is the, the part that I want to, uh, expand upon, over the next week, June tenth to, uh, the seventeenth, uh, the precipitation forecast, uh, is a half inch to another inch of rainfall across Keith County. Uh, since most of our precipitation is a result of thunderstorms, those amounts are gonna vary, you know, across the county, you know, it's not like we're all gonna get an inch at the same shot. Uh, six to ten day outlook covering June fifteen through nineteen, uh, calls for above-normal precipitation for Keith County. Okay. Uh, for June, the latest monthly outlook calls for above-normal precip for the southern half. Average precip for June in Oklahoma is three point eleven inches, so far we've received one point two seven inches. Uh, the latest ninety-day outlook covering June, July, and August calls for below-normal precip across the county. However, in the thirty-day outlook for above-normal precip for June, uh, we are heading into a drier pattern from mid-July into August. And that dryness, uh, they think is gonna carry over into the fall months, so that being said, uh, if the council chooses to give a, not take action or take action later time, uh, on a full ban, at least in the corporate city limits, uh, we're wet. Or people can, you know, people can do that. Those conditions are, uh, when we established this, um, a few years ago, we tried to pick and choose, okay, so corporate city limits, we're gonna, you know, that's, that's okay. Uh, but, uh, a mile outside in the county, it's not okay, and it just turned into a big mess. Okay, so this go-around, we established the ban, uh, or we, we established a recommendation for a ban, and that was in total, everything. Uh, just to make it simple. Uh, the, uh, early recommendation, uh, we have to make that, and I, I spoke with, uh, City Manager Wilkins, uh, about that first week of May, that's when we meet, uh, when fire chiefs meet and we form that recommendation. At that time, we hadn't received, uh, the great deluge of rain that we had, our conditions were still dry and looking to remain so. So that was a recommendation at the time. Um, personally, I still stand by that. But given the forecast that we have just received from the National Weather Service at four o'clock this afternoon, I would be remiss if I didn't share that information with you all in making a, uh, a sound decision on this, on this issue, I understand it's kind of a hot topic with some people. And, uh, there, there's, there's, uh, varying opinions on what should be done. Okay. Uh, public safety is my responsibility, I take that seriously. And like I said, we ended up with egg on our face the last time we tried to do the pick and choose thing. So, uh, I've given you the information for the weather forecast, it looks favorable, uh, coming into the first part of July anyway. So I don't have any reservations if there wasn't a, you know, i- if there was no action taken, I don't have any reservations to that way. Uh, at least in the corporate city limits, now out in the county, uh, that, uh, these wild oats are starting to head out. They are curing, and a few more days like we had today, and they are gonna be fully cured, and it's gonna be gasoline out there. We don't have wild oats growing rapidly in town, so we're, we're all right.
I sow my wild oats.
Yeah. Now, um, in, in, uh, years past, uh, just, uh, just to set the record straight, uh, we have had a few fires that have started in city limits from fireworks. Uh, those are mainly going to be like dumpster fires, trash can fires. We've had a few, uh, there was a backyard up on Apple Avenue, uh, parked by the, uh, uh, Catholic church over here, uh, was, uh, a small fire over there. Uh, so there have been some issues with fireworks in town, uh, uh, I don't, I don't know if it was last year, the year, I think it was the year before, uh, right up on the fireworks hill itself, they, uh, they, they set the hill on fire, uh, after the big show was over with, people in the parking lot started, uh, started the hill on fire, so uh, we have had a few little incidents, uh, nothing that wasn't able to be managed, of course. Uh, but, uh, just, just to set the record straight, there have been some incidents where, you know, those things did occur. Okay, uh, again, uh, I'm giving you the information, uh, with the weather forecast, so that you can make an informed decision on where you wanna go next. Um, I understand, I, I have been invited to the, uh, I wasn't told about the county commissioners meeting tomorrow. Uh, but, uh, if they're in a discussion of this as well, then they may be thinking about rescinding that as well, I don't know, I haven't talked to any of the commissioners to know what their, uh, mindset is. Uh, all we do is make a recommendation, that, that, that's it. And based on that information that we had from those independent meteorologists, uh, that was best information that we had at the time, which is the same information that I gave, uh, City Manager Wilkins.
Sounds like the county commissioner will be discussing this again tomorrow, they may be reaching out to you, cause I talked to a couple of them. And they're scratching their heads too about the weather, you know, but, uh, you know, I, I can understand, we can we can discharge fireworks, corporate limits. Uh, because people have nice green lawns and, and paved streets, we don't have the risk out in the rural areas. When there's a fire in the rural area, that's where you guys are going. Yeah. And then we don't have the same coverage in the city at times, so I, I understand your position, your strategy in looking at it county-wide, makes a lot of sense, uh. And I, I remember a fire by my house in like ninety-five, uh, big evergreen tree caught on fire, and it got the house hot, melted the side of the house and the house next to it, and I was, I was a falling house after that, so I, you know, I was out with hoses and ready. So it, it does happen. Uh, and then every year I have to go up and clean my roof off, cause there's fireworks on it. So
Well, I, I, I would, uh, you know, I, I have absolutely no issue with, you know, uh, fireworks personally, anything like that. Um, uh, a- again, the, uh, uh, recommendation, uh, was established with the information that we had at the time. And, you know, well, nobody knew it was gonna rain six inches on us and turn everything gray. Uh, it did, and it, it, it lulls us into a false sense of security sometimes, is what that does, cause again, a, a, a week from now, things could look a lot different out there. Uh, maybe we get another inch or two of rain, and it doesn't look different. Um, I have to plan for the worst-case scenario, so uh, but again, I'd be remiss if I did not give you all of the information so that you can make an informed decision on what the weather patterns are expected to be.
Appreciate that.
So Chief, uh, so your official recommendation, I know what it was before. Based on just today and all the information that you have, I'm sure, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, what's your official recommendation on the professional side for the, based on the fire department?
I, I stand by my recommendation that we made initially of, uh, to, to ban, I, I stand by that. Again, I would be remiss if I didn't share the information so that you all can make an informed decision, again, fine, it's just a recommendation to you folks.
And you, uh, you know, you
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, you know, our, our manpower during the day, uh, you know, uh, we've, uh, maybe you've noticed, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, tones dropped during the day, and we have a lot of other county trucker, uh, you know, Oklahoma, Kail, rural, Paxton. Uh, we have to do that now because we're all short of personnel during the day. And, uh, that's, that's how we affect a, a response, is by everybody gathering together, so we're not only affecting the Oklahoma people, uh, when those calls drop, we're calling people from East Illinois, rural, from Paxton, uh, possibly further away, and, and those things go into those, uh, uh, recommendations as well, it's
And you are not the only chief of the county that is in concert with this.
No, I spoke with Chief Mal, and I spoke with Chief Gartrill today, uh, they're both on the same page. Uh, Chief Olson from rural is on a trip up to South Dakota, so I was unable to speak with him.
And we, we thank you for being here too, I remember there's been numerous times you've come out here to speak, even when we had the big fire out on the interstate, you know, you came right off the scene to fill us in on different things, and, you know, your job is to protect the community, but it's also protect your volunteers and those that are, you know, put their lives on the line when they put out these fires. I mean, there may not be a whole lot of property loss, but it's easier for somebody to lose their lives doing what you guys do, so you know, that should never be taken lightly.
Well, we appreciate the, the support of the community, uh, we couldn't do what we do without that support. Uh, our citizens, uh, we're, we're honored to serve in this capacity. I just hope that, uh, you know, we can find some resolution on this particular issue and, and, uh, and always make everybody happy, but, uh, hopefully we can find, uh, an amicable resolution for everyone.
And you're always looking for volunteers, still, I think there's positions open?
Yes, there are positions open. I have, uh, I have applications over there right now, but we can bring some over.
We appreciate what you do.
Any other questions from the chief? Chief, thank you. Anyone from, uh, the audience have any comments? Wish to speak?
I wouldn't. My name is Ryan Christensen. Just wanna speak a little bit about this and the damages I believe that are caused with the nonprofit organizations, the fundraising for these. I run a nonprofit organization. We don't do fireworks. But it is hard to get funding and hard to make things work when a lot of organizations use this for their main funding for a year. So I think the revenue loss, like this year, yes, everybody's gonna be going to Grant or to Arthur or Sydney or North Platte. If they wanna watch a firework, so it's the basis of it, so fireworks definitely cause fires. I don't know. Yeah, I put a bunch of stuff on Facebook, I never said they didn't cause fires, I was unable to find any. I went through fire pages trying to find specifics, and that's where I went with that, so I'm not saying that they don't do it. I'm saying there's a lot of things that do, there's inherent risks in life when you walk out of your door every day. I thank the fire department for everything they do. Volunteering and taking the time to do those things takes a lot. And I have nothing against any of the fire department or anybody else. My concern is the youth organizations, the revenue, keeping everything going. And it just seems like there's no consistent timeframe. People are trying to figure out if they're doing it or not. I mean, it seems like we go through it a lot. One twenty-two, we went through it, uh, this year.
That is the basis of what I would like to say tonight, please. Any questions? Thank you for, for coming and giving your comments, and I appreciate you calling me and, and talking to me about it too, and I think you reached out to the county commissioners and the rest of the council. What does a civic organization make on fireworks annually, do you know, do you have any idea?
Since we don't do one with our organization, I've had people tell me they make anywhere from seven to eight thousand dollars a year. Some of them have said three to four. I guess it depends on who's doing what. So, and then some of them do a lot more, on a lot bigger stands than others do. I think it was a soapbox derby who said they seven to eight a year, I think it was, they put on there. That's all, and my only concern with that is there's a lot of things out there.
Kevin, what's, what's been the feedback from the organization?
It's, it's a time, it was, there was understanding, cause we were under the statewide ban at the, at the, the time, and all the fire chiefs were in concert, uh, um, the organizations, the optimists and soapbox were they were concerned about stocking inventory and then not being able to sell it, that was the primary concern, uh, so a decision um, when they Judy did the last day for ordering was late May, early, eight, late April, early May.
We have a trailer waiting for this decision tonight. So our trailer can come out if you guys decide differently. They made an extra special.
You just answered a question I had, it looked like too late.
I did reach out to the office club. Uh, they, they felt that it was too late to find us buyers, too late, they, they already told the fire that they couldn't do it this year. Um, and I reached out to them, see what they thought, just to see if maybe there's a chance they could get it going. It's just a timeframe, they don't have the manpower or the, 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 the time to scramble to get everything set up. So that the office wouldn't be able to do it this year, but after hearing that, um, I, I, I didn't realize there are already people that still had some stands that still had fireworks that could possibly be in help.
It's interesting, so like a, uh, I'm gonna pose a, what if you're like, what if, if, if we rescinded the prohibition of permits, and a vendor opens up, starts selling them, and we have twenty-some days, a hundred-degree weather, and it gets dry. And then, and a stick either we ban it or the county or the state comes in with the ban. So they've sold fireworks, but you can't just start it.
Well, there is, there's, there's that risk, okay, so
Yeah.
The, the ordinance reads basically in, in two sections, it reads as to the discharge of fireworks, and then it reads as to permits for vendors. And so on the discharge side, the, the ordinance, you know, it's been in place for years, it just establishes the timeframe in which fireworks can be discharged, and so there's actually a timeframe in the ordinance around the Fourth of July and around New Year's. And it's a negative, and it's a, it's, it's, uh, it's a crime to discharge in other than those time periods. So that's set by ordinance, those, those timeframes are in place, and then it goes on to say that, that the council, uh, retains the right for health and safety reasons to temporarily change the dates and the time that a person may discharge. So that's the first thing you look at is, is you'd have to make a discern, determination for health and safety reasons that you're gonna, uh, temporarily change the time. And then it goes on to say this, it is also, uh, uh, the council also retains the right for health and safety reasons by motion to temporarily prohibit the discharge of fireworks. So you've got the ordinance says, here's when it's gonna be done, so that's the general rule, it's permissible and it can be done in these time frames. And then the council retains the right for health and safety reasons to change. The times and dates or to temporarily prohibit. And so that's what you'd be looking at.
For either one, the sale or the.
Okay, so that's on the discharge. Yeah, and then on the on the vendor permits, there's that that just has to do with what the vendors have to provide in terms of information. In order to get. A local permit.
There's a there's specific dates that the vendors can sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's the same, it's it's the same.
Then it's discharge, so as soon as they start selling, they can discharge.
Yeah, yeah. So I I I tell you that because the it's it's permissible unless the city says, hey, for health and city re- health and safety reasons. We're going to do one of two things. Change that schedule. Time and date. Or temporarily prohibit. And a temporary prohibition can be. The entire time. And then next year, you know, it's just back in place again for the regular time unless there's an action at that time. So I think that's the way, that's the reason why it's set up that way. So it was you would, it was always permissible unless there was the determinations made based on recommendations. Matt, could you please come to the podium? I have some questions for you.
Do you do nothing else today?
Uh, does anyone have any questions for?
Ryan.
Yeah. Did you come on down? Great, thank you. Uh, so what civic organization are you with?
I'm one of the oddities. I am more of a personal. We give money to the Legion, but otherwise it's a personal. Project.
Okay.
Which that was the part of our income that is now not going to happen if you. With them. No way do I want to fire. Please understand, I don't want anybody hurt. Nothing like that, but that are we, aren't we Kaboomers has been great as far as. Um, we're gonna cancel the trailer, cancel the tent. No. Wait for the other shoe to drop. Maybe we'll hold out. So they have actually held out on the tent and the trailer. For tonight's decision.
So what is like the drop dead date for you? The to make a decision, I I mean, whether you move forward or not.
Well, uh, my husband would reschedule his surgery and. I would continue taking the days off. That's if you choose to do it, we'll adjust our life because we already have days off for. Planned and then things changed. And so we would just make adjustments. It's the hiring of help and that kind of thing is. Just trying to get things lined up is where the timing comes into play because we've been waiting for the other shoe to drop. And then I know nobody plays Mother Nature. Nobody knows for sure, but.
Let me, let me ask you this, if. If the if the prohibition on issues permits. Would be rescinded. And you would. Start to sell fireworks on what the twenty?
The thirtieth.
Thirtieth, the thirtieth.
Was reduced to five days out of the twenty-two.
And 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 then let's say that. You know, we had another statewide ban or the city ban or the county. I mean. I I guess you're okay with that because you 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 keep an inventory of fireworks.
Um, we're fortunate, the company of Kaboomers. Um, fronts everything. So whatever we don't sell, they take back. We don't have to pay for it. So. Kaboomers is one of those rare companies that does that. A lot of it. Other organizations have to pay upfront or pay for what they don't sell. So we would just call Kaboomers and say. Once again, it's been taken.
So it it doesn't impact you then? Like it might be somebody.
Right. If it's black cat or if it's, you know. Indians or some, they might have other, um, rules as far as how they. Run their business, but.
Okay, so again, the. Level set, we don't have a ban on the discharge currently. But there is a prohibition on issues.
We have not issued permits.
Okay.
Based upon the recommendations of the of the county fire chiefs. And at that particular time, first off, it was it was it was statewide.
Right. And Kaboomers had sent in their check. Early on in the year and then it was received back. Um, June third, they got the check back for our permit. That's why it's that, is it, isn't it?
Any other questions from the council?
So I gotta just speak on this and it's it's tricky. We do value the fire chief's opinion and insight on this and don't take that lightly. Kind of prepped some notes. I'm just gonna go over this quick, but. But I want to rewind kind of just show where I started up on on this whole subject. It was back in April. I was initially in favor of a potential ban, not necessarily, not necessarily because I believed it was the right long-term policy. But I was concerned about the timing. If the city was going to implement a ban. It needed to be done early to prevent financial harm to our local fundraisers and fireworks sellers. Uh, who invent, who lead inventory. My priority then was ensuring we acted responsibly and didn't pull the rug out from under those who rely on fireworks sales and fundraising. However, in the months that have passed, I've had more time to reflect and more conversations with folks. My view has shifted significantly when I consider the conditions inside Oklahoma City limits specifically. The concern for widespread fire danger isn't as strong as it might be in the open countryside. We're largely surrounded by concrete irrigated lawns, maintained properties. The fire risk here is not the same as it is out in dry pastures of the county. Come to believe that this issue is really about personal rights and personal responsibilities. Fireworks are a part of our culture, our celebration of independence. And our local traditions. I remember I grew up in Imperial and. Every year the family drove up to Oglala, watched the fireworks show because we knew it was the best one around. Um, I think we need to encourage responsible use. We should educate, provide safety guidance. Be vigilant. But I don't believe a total ban is justified or fair to residents within city limits. Sorry that's long-winded, but I've plenty of time to think about this. It's it's tricky because it is. I'll be honest, I know some people won't like this, but if we're ever going to do a firework ban, I do believe it needs to be called in April. That's obviously we've seen a year like this, that's difficult, yeah. So then that again brings me back to the irrigated lawns and the actual, you know, camp. Like Ryan said, there is risks to everyday life. Many fires are caused by cigarette butts and. Burnt up wheel bearings.
You want me to step up?
Probably does have those numbers.
No, council, DPA don't have those total numbers, but you are absolutely right. Uh, fires occur with wheel bearings, they occur with cigarettes. Uh, they they occur, uh, you know, with just about anything spontaneous combustion from a compost heap. Can happen, okay? So, um. My recommendation that, uh. We, uh, we do this for corporate city limits and, you know, everything in total. Uh, I'm not just fire chief here in city of Oglala. I have jurisdiction outside the city limits. So we're still covered if the county decides to maintain their stand on that county bank. My district is still covered that way, okay? So, uh. It it's a little bit different for me in that aspect because yes, I am the city of Oglala fire chief, but my jurisdiction extends outside of that. For our, for our fire district, okay? That's where the the county, uh, are handling. Rural Fire Board kicks in, that's the governing body out there. And, uh, that would be. Conversation was going to be had tomorrow, I guess. Also, when we talk about those things, you asked me my opinion earlier and I said, hey, like, I stand by my first. That that's why. I stand by that because of the jurisdiction that's outside the corporate city limits as well. And again, uh, we had problems still fat when we tried to do the pick and shoot thing. So that's what we did that day.
I appreciate that and I absolutely understand, you know, looking at county, um. I, you know, my position here is looking just at the local limit, so, but I appreciate.
And I respect that viewpoint as well and I appreciate your gratitude.
Thank you.
Can I ask that? Nick, come up here to the podium, please.
Specifically, but anything? James Barish, representing myself and. Interested various friends and property, but, um. Found a little bit more on all the issues you've had in the past and setting it up with just within the city as opposed to your.
Um, there was a lot of misinformation, uh, that that surrounded that. So getting the communications out, uh. We had, uh, we had these fire banings. Uh, say somebody, uh, oh, we're here on East eleven, that's where that bus up to that pasture ground right there. Uh, well, can can we have a bonfire? Can we do that? Well, an ember might carry over into that grass hole. Yes, their lawn is irrigated, but they butt up against the pasture, still inside the corporate city limits. So those, that's just one example of some of the issues that we had, some confusion surrounding it. And then we get phone calls from the neighbors concerned, somebody had a bonfire next to this pasture ground, we have to go out there and address that issue. Typically it was, you know, you've got a small fire here, um, be really careful, uh. If they were, you know, really carried away or burning cardboard or something, then we would have to ask them to extinguish that, put that out because they can't do that in. Again, that's just one example. Uh, and then, uh, uh, Mary Anne confusion just like down Paxton. They, I I want to have a little campfire down on the ridge. Can I do that? Well, no, you can't. So. With the corporate city windows, uh, and again, the recommendation being one of this. We, uh, collectively, uh, the forefire chief from New Orleans, he's down in Oglala and Paxton. Uh, just said, we're gonna do it all. And everything, all, you know, everything will be covered like that. Uh, I again, I can see where this is, uh, going to be an issue with, again, uh, I anticipated the. The irrigated lawns, the the concrete streets, you know, everything like that. And we don't have a ton of wildland urban airface. So, uh, uh, one of the areas I can think of actually behind Mr. Fisher's house up there on that hill. Uh, where there's a lot of, uh, trees and grass and things like that. Um, those are the kind of areas that we had surrounding, you know, the fusion surrounding that. So it led to some, what do you say, minor inconveniences. We didn't have any major issues, uh, there were, there was just a lot of misinformation. Speculation and things like that. So to avoid this speculation and misinformation, which is said, okay, we're just gonna do it all. Oh. Here, here we are.
And so by all, you mean like bonfire and anything that. Fires, bonfires and fireworks is the same category.
Okay, um, bonfires and fireworks are are technically not in the same category right now. Uh, the open burning ban was rescinded. Uh, because of the rain. Uh, fireworks, uh, that remained and again, and guess we'll see what the county commissioners have to say about tomorrow. Uh. Due to that long range forecast, again, no hot dry weather and what are our conditions going to be? And again, unfortunately, I don't know, we're going off the information again. Uh, and and in all fairness, like you said, I I called them today at four o'clock before this meeting to give you the most current information, boss. Um, that open burn ban was rescinded, so people can do campfires and things like that. Bonfire is a permitable fire. So you have to have a burn permit for anything over three feet tall, three feet wide. Uh, and then of course an open burn like a pile of brush or anything like that again. So, um, fireworks, you know. I had nothing to do with the the vendors permits, you know, they they, uh, they give me a list of them, so I know who's selling if they bought that. Um. But, uh. We, uh, we don't, uh, it's not really. It's not permitted the same way. I don't issue a burn permit for somebody to go, you know, set off their fireworks. That's that's not how that is. Uh, they're, if they're allowed to be discharged, they're allowed to discharge, uh, where. Bonfire and open burn has some, have a permit and that's according to state that you. So I borrow the answer to your question.
I guess that was pieced it together then. The issues that you were mentioning earlier having had were more specific to like bonfires and burn permits in certain areas.
Uh, yes, at that point in time, but they weren't, yes.
Right, and I guess this will be a question, so I don't know if it matters, but. Do you foresee there being as much issue with that? If there were statements in regard to fireworks, those two bonfire?
Do I see as much potential?
Like if a state, well, I guess it's up to you guys, but like if a statement was made, but you can. Sell and purchase or vendors can sell fireworks within city limits and they can be fired off within city limits. Do you see there being as much of an issue there as there was for the bonfire?
Uh, the issue with bonfires is the embers traveling into those, uh, cured fuels. Okay, so fireworks have the same, uh, capability or or, uh, the same potential to drift into cured fuel. Okay. Um, we're, we're not really talking about, uh, the same kind of thing. Firework is a short-lived resource. Where, uh, that, uh, that campfire ember, it might be a bigger piece and it's just floating on breeze and it lands out there. So. My, my concern is not so much with, uh. My concern is not so much with. How the ember gets there with what actually generates the ember. Uh, if you set something on fire and watch it, uh, it has a potential to be an ember. Uh. That's the, that's the main concern. Now, uh, if these pastures and everything remain nice and green and. Uh, we don't have that potential, then there's no issue. I just don't know what that's going to be. Again, the, uh, burn ban, the open burn ban was rescinded, um, the discussion of the fireworks. Uh, we still have the same potential for embers to to carry. Uh, but again, I gave the information on what the extended release, actually about the winter showing is going to be. And we're supposed to get more moisture and things are not supposed to really start, you know, uh. Expanding as the way they forecasted up until, you know, mid-July.
And Chief too, also on that, uh, with the bonfires and things like that on the burn ban. That can be put back into place if conditions reach a requirement to put it back in place.
Yes.
The thing we're dealing here with is timing. So we're saying, we're trying to see what was going to happen in the future and we compare it to bonfires, which. That can literally be shut back down in two weeks. We shut down fireworks. The day before, the Fourth of July is going to cause bigger issues. So it's a timing issue. They're kind of two different things that we're looking at. Uh, I mean, if Fourth of July was probably today, chief's recommendation would probably be different, but we're looking at July fourth. So. And I think, you know, Chief, uh, you know, I'll state this on my own, I. You know, I have personal beliefs. I can sit there and say I like fireworks and want to light out fireworks, but. We have you in the position we have you in to give us the information and make recommendations on a professional level. Um, I mean, between you and all the other fire chiefs, there's hundreds of years of experience if you add everybody in total. And on my end, I can't sit there and say my personal belief should trump what you believe in the safety of this community. Um. I just can't do that.
Well, again, I wanted to give you a complete, uh, forecast for, like I said, this next coming couple of weeks, but you can make it for the city. Uh, regardless, I I'm going to stand by my recommendation, but. That that weather forecast is there and, uh, I would again be remiss if I. Explain that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you very much, chief.
In the comments, council. Anybody have any? Suggestion, recommendation, promotion, or how to proceed? Do you want to kick it down the road to the twenty-fourth? Uh.
I personally feel. I personally feel that we don't, we shouldn't take action. It's my personal opinion. I did reach out to N W S this morning, I got the same exact report that Senator got from uh, Mr. Butler. Literally verbatim. Just based off of that, I I I personally don't feel that a ban is warranted. In my, in my, in my opinion.
Well, yeah, great, and if we take no action, right, if we're not, we're not paying. What about the issue with permits, sale of them now? I mean, people only have to go out of town, I guess, to buy their fireworks too.
I mean, if we've got vendors that have fireworks and wanna buy a permit, let them buy.
Then we'd have to give uh, city manager Wilkins directly to, to um. Issue permits, issue permits, I guess.
I think personally, I would be in favor uh, of following, you know, chief's recommendation. Uh, at this time, I don't see any issue if we kick down the road, we still can't sell them, it's still a timing issue. Um, you know, if chief comes up and tells me he's fine with it, then I'll be fine with it, but until then, I'll be no.
Yeah. I've gotta follow the chief's recommendation too. I spent twenty-seven years on fire department. And I think we have one of the best fire departments in the whole state. And I, I'd have a hard time going against what it says.
Yeah, it's hard, because I'm gonna have him out of Kido, but, you know, I, you know, chief's in the position he is, and I have to trust. The information he's given and his opinion, he's seen it a trillion times. You know, growing up around here too, it's not like we canceled the Fourth of July fireworks, you know, every other year for the last thirty years. You know, it's a strategic thing based on current conditions, and unfortunately, last. You know, couple of years, we've had to make some hard decisions, you know, last year we were able to, year before that was canceled. Um, this year's one of those hard decision years.
But the reason, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason the person made was there was to give everybody a heads up as far as. Ordering and all that kind of stuff. You didn't want them, so you were giving people time to do it, and that's why you do it. That early is so people don't get stuck.
That's correct.
We need to book our show in April.
Yes.
And we have to pay whether we shoot them off or not. They will get a few rain games, yeah. Yeah, I, you know what, I. I like fireworks as much as the next guy, as long as someone else is shooting them off, uh. You know, I had, I had a friend who lost an eye because of fireworks, uh, I had a good friend who was a Vietnam vet, he hated it. Uh, left town when fireworks went off, couldn't stand it. Uh, but I don't think fireworks make you any more patriotic than the next guy. Uh, just because they're going off, so. Uh, we still don't have a ban on fireworks, uh, city manager is not issuing permits for the sale of them. Are we gonna leave this to the week fourth, you know? Motion to ban them down, uh, no motion, motion to.
And I think one of the things that's gonna be hard is if we don't take action tonight, and we push it down. And people are out there spending money, they're hedging their bet. What are we doing, what's right to give them a heads up on how they're utilizing their funds and their money, bringing stuff from out of state, out of town, whatever it is? And then to sit there and say, you can now not light off a couple hundred dollars, I mean. These are expensive, that, you know, they used to be cheaper, they're really expensive now. Are we doing favors to anybody by doing that? I literally kick it down.
I, no, I think if we don't kick it down the road, we decide tonight whether or not we're going to do this or not. I didn't, you were, Councilman Lafflin, right, I mean, it's a timing issue.
Yes.
And we do try to give people a heads up, uh, so they're not spending the money, giving nothing for you, and then being stuck with that. Please.
I'm understanding what you guys are saying with this, um, I guess, I'm kind of a little bit with Austin though of. There's inherent risk in fireworks. People, when they buy them, they're taking a risk, and so. Could the council not make a statement from tonight saying if weather conditions continue as they have been? There will not be a ban, but up to the twenty-fourth or whatever the date was that you guys said. Be notified that if conditions change to be more dry, there will be a ban. And then go ahead and issue, say, a permit to Gigi or anybody who happens to approach you, knowing that that's gonna be the case.
Well. We're not issuing perm- permits now, so that could stay in place till the twenty-fourth. If, if uh, you know, we wait to the twenty-fourth, then next council meeting to make a decision on whether we ban them or not. I mean, that is people who are buying fireworks, or the vendors that are doing it, I mean, they're taking a risk too. Again, it's, it's the climate issue.
But I mean, we've also run into the risk of, you know, in a perfect world, we could tell people, all right, you bought all these fireworks, I can't use them. And they'd say, great, yeah, I won't use them. Um, but this is reality, there's gonna be people shooting them off, there's gonna be calls, our police departments, you know, that have to go out on these calls. For illegal firework, uh, you know, lighting and stuff. I doubt it's just gonna be small areas, you're gonna have people do it. Uh, or probably have it even no matter what we decide tonight, but. Do we want to fuel the amount that then people have that our first responders have to make calls on, too?
Good, quick question for the chief. Sorry, I'm gonna give you a real specific cigarette. Cigarettes, do they have a longer fuel source than fireworks?
You need me to do a little French?
Yeah, if you could lean, so. That's what we're hearing, you can hear you there.
Uh, today's cigarettes, Councilman Dukeye, designed to not burn. Uh, you know, out the open without, you know, some sort of air source, so that's either inhaling. Or the wind blowing over the, uh, I don't, and I'm not a chemist, so I don't know if it's the paper or the process or whatever. Uh, but they are not supposed to sit there and smolder in the brot dish like, you know, the, like, you know, days. Uh, we still do find cigarettes occasionally that uh, the State Farm Marshal Investigator made a rule that was a source. Uh, but he never says that was the source, it's a potential source, so.
And it is illegal to discharge a burning cigarette?
Yes, it is.
On the roadway.
Uh, so. Fireworks are designed to, you know, uh, explode and incinerate. And uh, that paper is burning, I'm sure we've all seen some of those embers that are floating down in the air. I've never timed one, honestly, Councilman Dukeye and Mill, whether that cigarette would do the same. I cannot honestly answer that.
Perfect. I'm just trying to connect the dots and correct me here if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to find the. Kind of a logical approach to this. You'd stated that in the past fireworks in the city limits of Oglala, I had actually written it down, correct me if I'm wrong, have caused minor inconveniences.
I did say minor inconveniences.
Not that we haven't had any issues, but we haven't had anything major, summed it up, the minor inconveniences.
To my knowledge, in the city limits of Oglala, a house has never burnt down from fireworks, you know, from a fireworks actually started. Uh, we had a house fire that had fireworks stored illegally in it. That's exciting, pal. But uh, as far as uh, you know, a structure actually burning to the ground, being totally consumed by a firework, no. Not in my tenure.
And then you had also mentioned that uh, fireworks are a short-lived fuel source, even shorter compared to. To a wood-burning fire pit in the backyard of that source, so. Again, I'm just trying to find the logic here that we're about to do a full firework ban for selling and discharging. Just wanna make sure there's full logic in there, knowing. A short-lived fuel source even compared to wood-burning fire pits in the backyard, so are we banning those too tonight?
That's not on the agenda.
Okay. But we should be prepared to do so. I think Chief would also recommend a bit, you know, if the things change, everything gets hot, there will be a recommendation that comes down the pipe for that. Statewide as well. Standby, I don't think we should ban them.
You wanna make that motion? I mean, it's, you know, I, I mean, we're, we're not banned now, but I guess that would.
A negative motion?
Yeah, you don't have to take any action unless it's gonna be too bad.
Right, okay.
Yes.
You know, then I'll, I'll make a motion to temporarily prohibit the discharge of sale of fireworks from June twenty-fifth to July fourth.
And that should be June.
June the thirtieth, but June the fifth, July fourth.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Lafflin. And a second by Councilman Block. To. Temporarily prohibit discharge and sale of fireworks from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to July fourth, twenty twenty-five. A further discussion. Okay, please call for the vote.
Dupierre.
No.
Holstein.
No.
Lafflin.
Yes.
Crasky.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Three yes, two no.
All right, thank you for the uh. Good discussion. Unfortunately, the weather is where it is. Uh, moving on, planning and zoning, application for a journeyman plumbing contractor license from Austin Wheeler.
This friend, this normally come under consent, that we haven't really consented, but gentlemen's fastest examination.
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve the application for a journeyman's plumbing contractor license for Austin Wheeler.
One second. We have a motion by Councilman Lafflin and a second by Councilman Holstein to approve the. Journeyman Plumbing contract license for Austin Wheeler. There's no further discussion. Council, please vote.
Holstein.
Yes.
Lafflin.
Yes.
Crasky.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Dupierre.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carried, uh, public transit, software and license agreement for CTS software.
Ms. President, this is a, this is a federally mandated piece, mandated piece of software that that we're required to participate in. And it's a right management software that is used for scheduling, right, management, it uh. I, it's, it's required. Go, go, buddy, you wanna, you wanna, do you have any further insight? And I mean, it's, I don't. We don't think we need it, but we don't have a choice to whether or not we have to have it. I think it makes our life harder, having less software.
A lot of clouds, Public Transportation Director, um. It's, I think it's more for them because they don't feel some things get tracked. The way they wanna track the surge of revenue hours, revenue miles. It, you know, the, the positive I see out of it is I'm gonna get cameras on the buses, which. I think is important to protect the riders because of this, and age, he doesn't know what they're gonna get accused of. So that's the positive for the software. And because we have funding still left in our fiscal year twenty-five. That's why I'm trying to get it done in June rather than waiting till October one. Because of the fact they cut our budget for this fiscal year twenty-six. And this was part of that expense, and by taking it out of the twenty-six budget, we had to cut less somewhere else, because that had to stay in no matter what.
So they cut and then forced us to get a.
Yep, correct, I, I told my, the place to cut thirty thousand dollars and. They didn't agree.
And though we have to pay for it, is there any standard of how much you have to use it or how you have to integrate it?
Well, we, we have to use it. But.
But to what extent you have some?
Part of it, I mean, to have it run effectively, you have to have someone that's just one hundred percent of the pasture. We don't have that. Nor do I feel we need that to operate efficiently, so therefore, you're still got the human error side of it. Because you're gonna have to go in and enter some of that stuff, because to me, it's silly to have someone sit in the office. On the slow time, when they can answer the phone and they can go drive and they can, you know. That's more taxpayer dollars than I can.
So, twenty-five thousand, four ninety-five, right?
That is the total cost of the software. And then the cameras is forty-eight hundred, and then the annual maintenance between for the two is eighty-three seventy. Ten thousand of that comes from CARES Act, so that's a hundred percent. And then the remaining twenty-eight, six sixty-five, we would get ninety percent federal, state.
And this is a requirement, so.
It is mandated, basically, if we don't do it, we'll lose all of our lending.
Who is the risk of the funding regardless for next year?
They haven't really told us, other than there wasn't enough, and that's why we're having to cut our budget for twenty-six, they're not even, it's a two-year budget. But they haven't even looked at twenty-seven, because until they know what's left in the twenty-five, from what people have asked, what they've spent. There may not be the shortfall they think there is.
But if we don't approve this, we don't get any funding, that's right?
I'm not sure when it will stop, but yes, it will stop is what I understand.
Great.
I agree. But we'll use it the best way we can.
And as Colonna mentioned, we are accelerating the implementation of this due to the notification of probable. Up to thirty percent budget cuts in the next end of fiscal cycle.
Right, which is why that brings this on, that we have to do another resolution later on. Basically, because I had money left with what I could put it in and not have to have that thirty thousand dollar expense out of my twenty-six budget. So I can leave them places where I felt I could leave them.
Yeah, it's crazy, that's make us spend money to get money.
I agree.
And they could cut it all, and we'd just be a loss anyway.
Twenty-five thousand dollar software program.
Great. Somebody's making a lot of money off this somewhere.
I'll move to approve the public transit software license agreement for CTS software, authorize the council president to sign the agreement.
Second.
And motion by Councilman Holstein, a second by Councilman Lafflin, approve the CTS software agreement. There's no further discussion? Jake, please call for the vote.
Lafflin.
Yes.
Crasky.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Dupierre.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Uh, item, uh, D, what is it, six D, uh. Is uh, not gonna be discussed, we need to, uh, get some. Need to get some engineering, engineering conduct contracts on that, so uh. We won't deal with that. Moving on to water, uh, rebate for the repair of inoperable curb stops replaced within sixty days, notice from the city. A faulty curb stop. I asked Kevin to put this on the agenda after our. Uh, discussions on Ms. Maxie's property. And it sounds like we have roughly twenty-five to thirty of these units out there now that are not operable. So instead of, I was thinking, you know, how do, how do we do this? And instead of, you know, uh. The, the, the city taking ownership of curb stop, uh, which. I would be opposed to it because we don't know where a lot of them are, or a lot of them have been made inaccessible. Uh, but for those that aren't operating, I thought of doing something. Uh, like a five hundred dollar rebate, if they would fix it within, you know, thirty days or sixty days or whatever. So Kevin uses curb stop fix, and uh, we're gonna send him a notice. He's gonna hire a plumber to get it fixed. Plumber's gonna come to us, to the city, and buy a curb stop for two hundred bucks.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Kevin's gonna bring, the plumber's gonna pay us the two hundred dollars for curbside. Um, he's gonna bring the city bill for fifteen hundred dollars, and we'll give them a five hundred dollar rebate. Or if he only has, you know, a four hundred dollar bill from a plumber, a four hundred dollar rebate.
Those up to your recommendation.
Yeah, up to five hundred. We haven't drafted anything yet, just, I wanna get some feedback on this, see what the council thought of this.
Mr. President, talking with uh, people service on this issue. Mr. President, talking with the people service on this issue specifically, and I think it, it, it is a good idea to revisit all of the curb stops that are on that list from two thousand nineteen. Uh, and then and not worry about the previous notice, notice going forward based upon revisiting these, these curb stops. So, so that would, that would add some clarity as to what we're doing, we're not just digging out an old slip from two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen. Um, so, and then we are working through documented SOPs, it, it, basically, they're they're, they're their recommendation is not far from what we've already been doing. Um, but fine tuning the rest of that SOP will relate to this discussion that we're trying to have with.
You know, I, I, I was thinking of, of the cost of this. Uh I think a five hundred dollar rebate would be
Fifty thousand bucks.
It might persuade some people to take action. I like it. I like it, and I think we need to talk about it. Um, just don't know if I'm quite there yet. In my view, the long-term goal should be that the city of Ogallala um, own and maintain the curb stop infrastructure. I know I've talked about this in the past, why? Because doing so gives us full operational control over the water system, ensures consistency and accountability and efficient response when uh, issues arise. So before we start talking about rebates or enforcement, I think we owe it to the community to sit down together as a council, review the full financial impact and have a serious conversation about what the ordinance changes might be needed to support a city-owned curb stops. Um, that kind of thoughtful long-term planning is what's best for our infrastructure and our residents. In terms of numbers, because I know the question may come up. I've taken a look, um, you know, since twenty nineteen, more than thirty curb stops have already been identified as needing replacement. If we were to take ownership and allocate a hundred thousand dollars a year, I estimate that we could, that could allow for replacement of forty to eighty curb stops annually. Depending on location and cost variability, of course. Um, the next question is where would we get the money from? Looking at the current budget, I see at least encouraging signs. As of now, we have thirty-three percent of the year remaining. Um, we still have forty-three percent of our budget left just on the water side of things, so that's giving us about a ten percent buffer right now. Total budget, one point seven eight nine million, that leaves us with a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of unspent funds. Um, more than enough to fund a program like this. From what I'm currently seeing, there's a possibility we could absorb this cost without seeking any rate increases or to most a very minor increase, and if that small increase directly lifts a costly burden from homeowners and gives us full control of the system, I believe that's a trade-off worth serious consideration. Now, I am the new guy. I haven't been through a full budget cycle yet, so I'm not claiming to have all the answers. What I'm asking for is just a pause, a little bit more time to slow down, evaluate all the options and make sure we're making the right decision and that the city has a fully controlled water system.
I don't think there's any problem with that, and there's no rush on this, and we're getting budget, we discuss it, but let me ask you this, if we're gonna own the curb stop, what if something's buried back under your driveway, under a patio, under a deck somewhere? The owner did not keep it accessible for us. We're gonna go in there and spend ten, fifty, twenty thousand bucks.
Sure. Um, so again, I'm a visual guy, I would love to get out in the community, go look at some of these, these problems areas that we talk so much about to actually visually see them. The first thing I would propose is we come to a location that's closer to the property line or the city easement. We dig down to the water line, we place a curb stop there and abandon the old one.
Yeah, I, I actually brought that up to Kevin. I don't know that we could do that. Abandon that, cause that you know, that, that curb stop may fail.
It's connected, it's connected to the main.
Yeah. So anyway, I, you know, that's fine, I, I think we, we can have a, a pretty healthy discussion on this when we get into budgets, but I just wanted to throw this out, and it was just one of those ideas that, that came up quickly, so.
And I wanna make, or I don't think it's a bad idea, I just wanna look at the full picture. Before we just start, sometimes I feel like things just get band-aided and band-aided, and before we know it, we're kinda.
Yeah, I would, I have to tell you what, if, if, if I had a decision, I'd probably take, uh I'd probably conform to most communities in Nebraska and have the owner take responsibility all the way back to the main. Uh, that's their service. So we just had, we just had a, a, a service line break on our side of the, of the property line last week, and that's probably a fifteen thousand dollars there. Yeah.
Is that some, all right, just something. Maybe already thinking that, but is this something that, um could have been prevented, had the city owned, like the line out through the curb stuff?
There, it's an aging system. Uh service lines, if they're galvanized, they rust through. Uh, if there's a, a freeze thaw cycle that causes a shift in landscape, it can just pull a little bit away from the, 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 the main. Um you don't have a whole lot of problem between the main and the curb stop, but when it does, it's expensive.
We were placed a lot of mains, I mean, it, it would it could make a huge impact to our cash reserves in the water department, but.
But if you had ownership of the curb stops or two to the point of the curb stop or over your period.
Still gotta pay for it, somebody got. So what, what, I think what Councilman Dupierre is saying, that the city should pay for it, put it in, and own it. When a, a new development is going in, the developer you know, is assessed for the mains coming in, the service lines, and the curb stop. And then, when the house is built, then that's service line is, is taken from the curb stop to the house, and the, and the property owner owns the curb stop, run currently.
And in new developments, the curb stops are in the easement. And enforcement of curb stops in the easement has not been, has not always been that. Which is why we have curb stops. And various ones, yep.
But uh, good healthy discussion, so any other comments or not, we can make sure we, we get this up, uh, at our budget workshops. Uh, moving on, police, many in the city of Ogallala police miscellaneous special fee schedule.
Mr. President, this is a situation that's only come up, I think, four times in my three years here, but it, it would be, it would be helpful if there was some um latitude on impoundment fees as, uh, people, if they're passing through town, they have a, they have a a, a little bit of a, a run-in or misstep, we impound their vehicle. It, the impound fees are three hundred dollars, they've got two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Or we've called it for another weekend, um. Or if it's a situation, or it's, it's in our best interest, cause it's a car that we really would not like to have to go through the the hassle and paperwork of of getting title to sell it to, or, or dispose of it. Uh, and sometimes you just won't, you just wanna get things resolved, we had, we had a somewhat heated situation here, that, that was, we resolved this week. Um, the fees get, we have been, I have been operating outside of, um my authority in doing this, and, and, um, I'm making a recommendation on the fee schedule that, that, that we allow. Um, with agreement between both the city manager and the chief of police to settle some of these.
How can you make that fair, cause you say you'll do it for me for two hundred and fifty dollars. And you say, Mike, no, you're gonna pay this three, not, I mean, how can you?
There, therein lies a challenge, it is, it is a judgment call, that's the reason I would not do it unilaterally, as city manager, I want it in concert with the police department, knowing what circumstances are behind the scenes and how this, how this vehicle ended up in our possession to begin with. And what we need to do to resolve it's in the, which is in the city's best interest.
Could you come up with some policy that you could follow, that we could, uh?
I could work with that.
I could work with that resolution, so we, we, we at least have some parameters that you're operating under. Instead of just.
I could work with Chief on that.
Okay, then we could run through Mike too, just to make sure that there's no, there'd be an issue on.
One thing you might wanna keep in mind, is there's always a tow bill that's the first part of that impound fee that the city's already paid, but so if you don't at least recoup that, the citizens are paying for somebody else's car to be towed.
Yeah, one.
Yeah, I'm all about trying to make it a little bit easier for you guys to rectify issues like this, I totally understand the situation, but I hear Kevin on that. It's gotta be something that kind of protects us from discrimination, inclusion.
Well, the prior city manager was never like that, and the next city manager wasn't like that, you know, he wasn't that hard to deal with, so. You know, you gotta, you gotta have some guardrails there.
So do we want to take action on this, or?
Uh, I definitely, I would, I would just table this and, do you come up with a, with a, uh certain, we need a video policy.
So what do we do about the one that from last Friday? They haven't picked it up yet. But I think they didn't told the dollar amount, they came today, I don't think they did.
They didn't pay the dollar amount then? That would be a condition that they had.
I think we still have to pick the work, I'd have to double check.
Yeah.
It was there on Monday still.
I would stick with the policy we have then.
Which is that's where it's.
Where's the chief?
Yeah.
The policy we have is, is the money.
It's just, it's a special fee to happen.
There you go.
Okay.
Easy enough. All right, uh are we gonna renumber these resolutions there?
Nope, this just won't be in our days, okay.
Uh, moving on, under public transit, uh, fifty-three eleven program agreement for federal aid funds.
This is also something new, that we didn't, we didn't sign these agreements without resolution before, this resolution is, is, is an add-on that allows, is, is a precursor to getting the agreement some.
Okay.
What we need to ask? Are you said that?
I would introduce the resolution in, uh, twenty-two sixty-nine and move for its adoption, though.
Uh, resolution for the fifty-three eleven program agreed, federal aid funds. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second by Councilman Block to an ordinance introduced by Councilman Laughlin, there is no further discussion. Please vote.
Crasky.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Dupierre.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yeah.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Five yes.
Is it, I got sixty-nine, it's eight.
It's gonna be twenty-two sixty-nine.
Okay, uh, resolution twenty-two sixty-nine is adopted. Thank you. Uh, reported city attorney. Okay. Our reported city manager.
Uh, primarily, Mr. President, just like some staff guidance. Normally, after the, we'll have the drone show on fifth, normally immediately after that, we initiate, uh, a full-page ad in the paper, we send out letters soliciting donations. Um, so, you know, there, there's gonna be costs incurred. We have in the, in the past, since I've been here, we've budgeted for twenty-five thousand dollars with the understanding that the county kicks in six thousand, the city kicks in six thousand, and then private donations picks up the other half. Donations have been down. I really didn't get a, a much enthusiasm from the county when I asked them for their six thousand. Um, before, I need, I need to give approval for fundraising efforts immediately after the Fourth of July. Which is, which has been in the past, this, this, what I'm asking for is guidance on whether or not we move ahead with fundraising and take responsibility of the show. It will not impact budgeting, we can still budget to contribute to a show. But maybe not take ownership of booking the show and responsibility for the entire show. But this, this gives civic organizations plenty of time to pick the ball up. And coming with the funding request.
I think this is another issue that needs a little more discussion, because we're gonna be making a dramatic change from where we started with fire department running it for a while. And then it just gradually get more and more, the city was running the whole show. And now you know, we're not, we're not getting the funding we're supposed to be getting for it, uh, shows are getting expensive. I would I'd like to see the, you know, a couple of council reps meet with the chamber to see if we could, you know work with the chamber on getting them involved in this more fundraising. I think we need to step back a little bit. I'm not saying that we don't support it and fund it. And we can contribute to it.
Well, what, what I'm seeking is, do we continue to wanna take ownership of the show?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, any, any other comments?
I agree with you, Steve.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree, I, I know, and I brought this up for the being I know in York, Nebraska, York County Chamber, they, they do fundraising the year before, and, and that's, they're the ones that are charged, so I, I, I think going to the chamber would be a good idea to see if I'd be some sort of.
And the chamber did it about three years ago, they, they, there was a piece in there when the Loop Foundation stopped doing it, the chamber did it for several years, and the city's only done it for like the last three. And the chamber to- told us maybe four years ago, I can't remember for sure, but time flies, it hasn't been four or five, maybe.
Fine.
Um and the chambers, that they didn't wanna have anything to do with it anymore. Now, there's new member, new leadership of the chamber that's could change, but that's why the city took it over, because if we didn't, it wouldn't, there wouldn't have been a show.
Well, the chamber, you know, they had access to all the businesses within town that they could go to for donations, contributions, and support it, and advertise.
I think citizens are much more likely to donate to the chamber than to say they're gonna come bring fire or we'll donate to the city, they we have a negative.
Like, yeah, let's say business with the chamber.
I can go to the chamber.
Um, also, I think, uh county has recommended that a formal recommendation be presented to them for those fundings from for here on, for their budget cycle, they're not just earmarking it, so.
Exactly.
So they, they definitely need somebody to go and present them, asking for those funds to be earmarked.
We have.
Yeah. That I mean, for whoever takes over.
Oh.
We'll need to make sure they make that request for that budget, so.
Okay.
That's the direction I need, I will I will, I will assume that we, I'm making, I'm moving forward with the that we will, we do not plan on taking responsibility for the twenty-twenty-six funding for shame.
Right, uh the project updates. Next. With that, and no, uh, further business on our agenda. So they did motion adjourn, move to adjourn. Like, have a motion by Councilman Block, second by Councilman Holstein to adjourn.
Block.
Yes.
Dupierre.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Crasky.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carried, we're adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.